Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting order. This is the February meeting of the Tip City Board of Education. And as always, we'll start with the pledge.
If we can have the students from this is the first class, then we leave us in the pledge. We have Lily McKinney, Griffin Heatherly, Lucas Hybrink, and Lucy O'Ramley. Students, if you want to go ahead and get started.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thanks.
Thank you guys. Okay, May, whenever you're ready. Mr. Venters.
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Here.
Mrs. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mr. Spann.
Present.
On present and count of four, sir, we have four. Moving right along, committee reports student achievement. Would you like to present our guests?
I'd like to welcome Mrs. Tina Smith. She's at Broadway Elementary. And she's going to present the two exciting things happening at her school. Mrs. Smith, if you want to come on in. Mrs. Smith.
Oh, you want me to come in, sorry.
Sure, we have a new group this year. Third graders, Tiptones, and they're going to sing for us tonight. Mrs. Whitman is our music teacher, and she's going to be leading them.
Thank you.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming, whose fresh stripes and bright stars through the perilous night o'er the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Before you have a seat, a couple of my singers would like to share some interesting facts about the choir with you.
Hello, my name is Milo Green.
And I'm Ava Unicat.
We are in third grade at Broadway Elementary. This year, our teacher, Mrs. Whitman, has started a choir called the Tiptones for Singers in the Third Grade. We practice after school on Wednesdays. We are the section leaders of the group, but the full choir has over sixty members.
The Tipton performed at the Broadway Christmas Program, and we also went Christmas carrying around the neighborhood. And this semester, we are going to be singing the National Anthem at the Dayton Dragons Game, perform at the Broadway Town Show, and elevate the arts. I like being in the group because I get to be with my friends, and I get to sing the heart of the music.
Thank you for having us at the meeting.
Thank you.
Good job, girls.
Yes. Carrie, Stanley, and Jody Duncan are going to share something we newly implemented at Broadway called Sensory Motor Pathway. They're going to share about it, and then we have a short video with one of our students doing the Sensory Motor Pathway at the end. So Carrie and Jody, if you want to share about the Sensory... You can just kind of stand by the table so they can see.
I'm Carrie Stanley. I'm a physical therapist in this district. I work in several other districts as well. But, so, I don't know. We've developed a Sensory Motor Pathway, then we've put it at Broadway Elementary School. We have it on the first floor and on the second floor. A Sensory Motor Pathway is a way to get our children moving because with the demands of academics these days, the kids are sitting in their seats too much. And movement is a way to wire the brain. So our brains aren't being wired while we're sitting here right now. Mine is, because I'm a... This is just a great way to get movement in. We noticed that recess is being taken away more. And it's working out really well. We've instructed all the teachers downstairs. They've got the kids going, and we just put the upstairs one up about a couple weeks ago. But adding the motor pathways to help improve cognitive ability, improve working memory and recall, improve attention and focus, promote social and emotional skills, reduce stress and anxiety, and make up for limited recess. Our kids are coming into school more stressed than they've ever been before. And we don't know why, but it's probably a lot of the environmental stuff that's going on at home. A lot of things are probably playing a factor to it. So if we can be a really grounded place for our children, get them to feel comfortable and get them moving, it's going to help them learn better. So there's a lot of research out there on Sensory Motor Pathways. Just Google it, and you'll see a lot of it come up. So I could give you a lot more information, but I think that this video will show a lot. I was just going to add some of the times that they use it. When they come in in the morning, you'll see them use it. When we have them go get a drink of water, they'll use it on the way to and from or other times. And some kids need it more than others. And you'll see that it helps all kids. It helps our special needs kids. It helps our regular academic kids, our typical kids. And they love it. Even when we were putting it together, they started moving it themselves, so. So this is one of our third graders doing the Sensory. It's on the first floor, and I'm just going to be following with the camera so you can see what he's doing. He said it gives his brain a break. That's a wall push. These are jumps. They can either jump over with two feet, with one foot. Here's three different lines that they have to visually access, so they have to decide which line they want to go on. There's wall sits over there. So it's promoting strength, balance, coordination, directionality, laterality, all those things that you need to learn. And I could get into all the medical issues about stimulating the cerebellum, but we don't need to go there. But if you need more information, I can provide it. That's a hopscotch, so they have to learn left and right and direction they need to go. Then there's a figure eight. He's jumping through the figure eight. He's going to come back and walk the figure eight, which is crossing midline, which then helps both sides of your brain to work together. And then the end is a straight line that they work on balancing. This is very basic. You can make them very high and very elaborate, but we... Start with something. At any given time in the hallway, you see two or three students, five to six students, doing this in between different breaks, like she said. So it's giving them the opportunity to get up and move.
So ask Mrs. Smith if we can all go on a field trip right now.
Occasionally, you'll see a teacher.
I'd assume the cost was very low, right?
Yes.
One twenty-five, and that's for upstairs and downstairs. And we still have plenty of supplies left over. Like, some of the tape is coming up and things like that.
And Mrs. Stanley must have talked to them at LT Ball, because they just requested supplies.
It's the one upstairs that's... They have not talked to me. It's pretty similar upstairs, too. It is very similar. The way Broadway is, there's some tile that is like very visually distracting. So we only did it on one end of Broadway, so it's a same color tile. It makes it easier to see and visually access. The way we have it set up, it's great for teachers to say, "Hey, Gavin, go out in the hallway and do this, because you need a motor brake." The teachers can still see them. I'm not really understanding exactly where LT wants to do it. I heard that they might want to do it in the band room or something like that. If you want to suggest that they talk to me about it.
I will do that.
We could do that.
Because I know they just asked for... We used some special end dollars to get that.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks great.
Mrs. Smith, some good things going on at Broadway.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we've got our superintendent and assistant superintendent report.
All right, I'm going to start off this evening with a recognition. We've got some great things going on with our board members and with our staff. And we'd like to take a moment to honor them. And we'll see if this will sit up here in front of here maybe. All right. You may follow it. See. Can we use the easel? What about the easel?
Let me hold it. There's an easel.
There you go. But the easel there. All right, we can't get the glass down. I'm just going to lay this one down so that we just don't have too many rest staffing things. So this evening, we have two individuals that we're excited to really highlight. The first I'm going to start with is Mr. Spann. Mr. Spann is being recognized, I'll let him stand up, Trent. He's been recognized for ten years as serving as a board member. And so OSBA is recognizing that, and there is a banquet coming up on March 12th, and he will be noted for that. As you know, as a board member, there's a lot of responsibility that goes with that. There's a lot of hours that people don't really realize, and phone calls. But ultimately, there's the passion that goes for caring for the district and our students. And Mr. Spann has shown that, and we're very thankful for you.
Thank you.
And our second recognition is hopefully a bit of a surprise. And this one is for Mrs. Robbins, Mrs. Lloyd Brooks Robbins. She is our communications coordinator, and we're going to have her come forward. She's in her sixth year here at TIP, and she has twenty-five years' experience with broadcast production, event planning, grant writing, and public relations. She's a very skilled communicator, and we rely on her a great deal. She's very passionate about her position, and she really highlights our school community in such a positive way. And many of you are very familiar with Quick News, which is something you get on a weekly basis. It's a beautiful publication. Most recently, she also has helped us with our quality profile. We've had her second one this year, and it's an outstanding publication. And she does every step along the way, putting that together and to lay out all of it. It's just a beautiful piece. She really uses a plethora of tools, and we really appreciate it. And we really know that she's very passionate about her position and her care for our district. And we love that.
Thank you.
So I want to let you know that, you know, all of these things take a team. I know that we had an application. We had Mrs. Paul was helping coordinate it, and Mrs. Dunaway had a letter of support. But I was so excited to nominate you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
She was. She has a special guest this evening. As you know, there's always someone behind the scenes.
Thirty years. Thank you, Mrs. Paul.
Need a good picture here. All right, all right. One, two, three. Let's do another one. And this was not Vigo Quality, like you guys. One, two, three.
What an honor to see that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Hey, they've earned ten years. I mean, come on. Ten years of service.
All right. All right, it's always exciting to take a moment to recognize those around here who's doing great things. So we are so pleased to do that here, too. Next item on the agenda is actually looking at personnel. And so Mr. Kimbich, I'll let you highlight that.
Well, we have several better on the agenda, but we just have, I think, one here tonight. So Matt will let you introduce yourself, and you got a sidekick with you. So it's not a stranger to Tip, because he coached my son. Never in football, though.
Hi, I'm Matt Burbocker, and this is my son Brayden. My wife is down at Walt Disney World. This was kind of unforeseen a few months ago when she scheduled that. But my daughter, she's at an art show at the Hammers Center there in Troy. But I'm very excited to be here in front of you guys tonight. It was going to take something special to get me away from Troy. And Tip City's got it. And I love the vision of our school, being an alumni of TIP and being around TIP for the last thirty years. It means a lot to me and my family, so I'm very excited to be back. I can't wait till tomorrow's. Hopefully, I can get going full speed. I know the boys are chomping at the bit. I'm chomping at the bit. I know, working on staff and stuff, so I'm excited. I want to thank everybody for, especially Mr. Beerhoff and Mr. Faust, because I'm not sure I'd be here if it wasn't for those two, because they came after and contacted me and got things going. So again, I'm very excited. I'm looking forward to working with everybody, the community, and taking our program to the next level. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I will say that you may excuse yourself if you'd like to. You can... I know we've got a girls' basketball game. We've got several things on on stage. Thank you for being with us. Very good. Facilities update, that's my next one. I'm going to kind of head over this way. We've been busy with facilities, and of course, Mr. Fister, he's very, very engaged with that. So I just wanted to point out for our community that it's... It was there. See, there's like scotch that's come up. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. There. So if you see this, this is just a black box that talks about our project. When you touch on this, it goes into the side screen that will bring up the master plan and all of the various questions and answers, a variety of things. And I think that's very, very helpful. So I just thought that might be helpful for our community to really see that and to just know that that's there. We also have videos of the meetings you'll see in there, information about the bond issue, some planned cost comparisons. And then we've been doing meetings as well with the Broadway side, the future side, as well as the Good Neighborhood side with Hyatt. So all of that information is right there, and I hope that that will be helpful to everyone. A number of our diagrams, certainly the presentations, will be highlighting the slideshows as well. Just wanted to highlight one here that we have completed since our last meeting, February the nineteenth. We had a session, and that was a community engagement session. Our next one will be on March the twelfth. Our last one is really looking at a conceptual viewing of the site and what that was going to look like with our plans. Our next one is highlighting with Mr. Stevenson at Mr. Stevens, and it will be with our bond issue, so it's a financial aspect. We also, for our Broadway site, we had a meeting on February fifth. Our next one is on March fifth, so that's coming up. That's on a Tuesday. Our Good Neighbor with the Hyatt area, and that one is going to be on Tuesday, March the nineteenth. And finally, Coffees, we've had two so far. Our next one is coming up, and that will be on March seventh. And that's at seven thirty a.m., and that's down at Brownsford Plaza. So hope that you join us. We are continuing out there, trying just to provide information and certainly trying to keep our community informed. All right, and then item E, we're looking at February fifteenth, our probational development. We had a great day on February fifteenth. I want to thank Mr. Kimbich and the District Probational Development Committee pulling that together. I also want to make sure that I thank Clay Lavricone, Nick Petro, Corey Rissmiller, and Sergeant Graham that provided our Alice training. We had our second session on that, and it was a great session. Our teachers are moving forward and now ready for more of what we call scenarios, so that we have a variety. We have some basic information, then we go out and have a variety of scenarios that we're practicing our strategy. So that was very well received. And once again, it helps us have an implementation of our strategies, but also then a very powerful debriefing about what went well, what are other things, what were the things we need to be thinking about, what things involved with certain decisions? And certainly, what are things that help us to try to make our students safe? And then we also had a guest speaker, and that was on human trafficking. That was a powerful message. It had a tremendous handout that had a lot of information. And it's one of those things about raised awareness. And it's a piece in today's world that sometimes it's a place that mentally we'd better not go there. But I think particularly us working with so many childrens and family, that I think it is extremely helpful for us to know signs and be aware and also how to reach out and help or seek support for those individuals. And finally, we had a 504 training that is a piece that's connected to, basically, a legal document that's prepared to help support students. And so just the do's and don'ts and a greater awareness of how that would work. Our middle school and high school staff attended that as well as administration. And it was very informative. Marie Anthony from Ricker and Ecker out of Columbus came and did that for us. She is one of the outstanding professionals in the legal field for special education. And she stawed out, and you will see at her conferences often. So she did an outstanding job. That was video taped, and Mrs. Stopp's class is just doing the final formality on that. So if any of our board members would like access to that at any point, let me know, and we'll make sure to make that available. And I know that the buildings as well just did some building focus items. You know, there wasn't too much time left from that day, but just some things to work on as teams and as a building. Anything you'd like to add on that, Mr. Kimbich?
Also, I had some feedback for our classified staff that work with kids, which is very well done. Also, Lisa Combs' company, she actually, her mother came in also. She sent her sidekick, Susan Abker, who was also very, very well received.
All right. Up to curriculum, and that's Mr. Kimbich.
So we are finishing our final touches on our science curriculum. Worked hard on that, and we will be presenting the curriculum maps at the March meeting, which I think is held at the high school. Am I correct on that?
Yes, it is.
That's where we'll be with that. You'll be getting those probably in March. Our last meeting together is March sixth, and we want to put our finishing touches on that. So soon after that, we'll have it in a Google Doc or some way to get it to you. I'm not sure if we want to put it out in a Google Doc or a PDF, but one of those ways will be put to you. So that's what's happening with curriculum right now.
All right, and then item G, that's a piece I'm requesting that we can come back here shortly. We have some other members that's going to join us for that presentation and our connection, so we'll look forward to that.
Sure. Well, with that, we can move on then to item four, citizens' comments. We have tonight Linda Aris here in the dress board.
First class.
First in all, yeah.
Well, first in all. There you go. Okay, so it's open. I can just keep going.
Nope, I'm hitting the button.
Dave's got a very harsh clock over there, so.
Well, hi, everyone. I'm just going to try to be at all of the board meetings now and through the election and just kind of give you an update of the meetings that we're having, the people that are involved in those meetings, and what's going on. So we had our first meeting Wednesday, I think, the twelfth. And it was a great turnout. We had twelve people come out. Dr. Kumpf was there. I want to thank you. And Mrs. Heatherly was there. Mrs. Robbins was there. And it was just neat to have them come out and give a general overview on the rules of running a bond issue, making sure that we are following all of those rules so we're not upsetting anybody in the community. I felt that the meeting was super positive. I want to thank Joelle Lynn personally for helping me get through that. It was the first time I've ever done that, and she was a great help and continues to be. So twelve people came. I felt that the people that came have a real interest in getting involved for the right reasons. They feel that this is the time for us to get behind this and to pass this and build a new school for our kids. All the demographics were present, but I feel like the demographic of maybe the twenty-five to thirty-five-year-old is really going to be important. And as I have reached out and talked to people in my neighborhood and in the community, it is just super positive. And that's the kind of campaign I want to run. You know, there's always going to be the people that don't want this to happen. There's always going to be the naysayers. But you know what? We're going to respect them, but we're going to push forward because I believe in the people I'm speaking to believe in this as well. So I'm very positive about it. And as we move forward, I'll be back to kind of update you on what's going on. And if you ever have any questions, just reach out and ask me. I'm going to be reaching out to you because, you know, this isn't just me. I need a lot of help, and I know there's a lot of great help out there. So any questions? If you're in the audience and you haven't been involved, I want you to know that we're meeting every Tuesday at six thirty at the Tip City Library in the boardroom. Come and join us, okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kimbich.
Yes.
There's one item I forgot. Do you care if I go back?
Oh, no, darling.
Mrs. Aris might have thought she might have a snack while she was over here. You know, when you're trying to pull off specific things, you have all sorts of things. Wait, I... I want to make sure presented. So it's a block T, our typically T. For the senior, one for you, Mrs. Robbins. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll share later.
You have executive session, so. No, I was so excited. I forgot that part. It's hard when you're keeping a secret. There's too many moving pieces there. So thank you.
Are we ready to go back, or?
I think we are. You are ready.
Okay, still waiting on that.
Still saving money, yes.
Okay. We'll come back to that. Next is president's comments. I don't have a lot to add today, but I'll add my personal thanks to Liz and Sam for their great service. It's nice to have a celebratory kind of atmosphere in the board meeting. It's been a nice night, so. Not that that's rare, but... It's nice anyway.
Those are big awards. They're ten-year, and it's...
It is.
But those are big awards.
That's right. So we can move on. Move on to approval of minutes. Dave Stevens.
All right, we can get a motion to...
Yeah, looking for a motion.
Approve the prior meeting minutes from the January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen regular meeting and the February eleventh, twenty nineteen work session.
Oh, yeah, I'll move, and I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I will say thank you to Mrs. Heatherly. She did... I apologize for the minutes being added so late, but I wanted to make sure that I had appropriate information in there. And so you'll notice they might be a little longer than normal just because of the issues that are in there. Just want to make sure we get that documented. Mrs. Heatherly did find some, I'll just say, spelling errors and capitalization issues. So the bulk of the minutes are still the same.
Sure.
There's no major changes. I have already updated those changes in the online version, so. I don't even think we need to go through what they are. And it's just capitalizing and misspelling here and there. I'm actually surprised there weren't as many as what she found.
Yeah, for that matter.
Nice use of blue pen.
She was very nice, so it was easy to find them. She actually marked it up for me. She said, just let me have those, and then she did it for me, so it was wonderful. So any questions on the minutes, or any other revisions that we may have missed?
We did a nice job capturing the content. Too big, yeah, that was a lot of work, I think a lot.
All right. Okay, yeah, ready for a roll call?
Okay, Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is approved. Okay, moving on to the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to accept the treasurer's report, it's moving.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept the monthly financial report, treasurer's report. Sam and Teresa, any discussion?
I really have nothing extra to add, except to note that if you go to my, let's see, this would be the page with the graph on it. You'll notice that one of the items for other revenues being a little higher than normal for January twenty-nineteen was, I'll point out, we did receive a thirty thousand dollar donation from a TIP graduate who passed away. He was a class of nineteen forty-nine, Mr. Joseph Barnhart. He left the school district at least thirty thousand dollars. The estate is still being finalized, so there could be a little more. But Mr. Barnhart was very generous, not only to TIP schools, but through other groups, churches, the library. Very generous benefactor. Did I say that wrong, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So.
Is that for the TIP, the Troy Foundation or TIP Foundation?
It was straight from his estate. So we were very appreciative of his donation to the school district. So other than that, business as usual, everything's going great. We did receive one tax advance at the end of January that is allowed by the Miami County Auditor's Office, so we could capitalize on the interest earned for, just, I think it was in there for a day, but hey, it's a day. And we continued to receive advances throughout the month of March, or not month of February.
Very good, I think we're, if there's no other discussion, we're ready for a vote?
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the appropriation amendments. Any motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Sam and Teresa, any discussion?
Very small number of appropriation increases this month. And one was, I'll just go through them really quick. We held two GWALK basketball tournaments at the middle school, and these were revenues that we didn't know we were going to do these tournaments. And so what's great about those tournaments is it's all profit to us. We don't have to, we don't have to remit anything for OHSAA visits in the GWALK. So once everybody gets paid, we get to keep the rest of the ticket sales. And then we just had some budget adjustments for the student activity group, and for a couple of our play and some sports sporting groups. Really easy month.
Okay, ready for a vote?
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion's approved. Next is the then and now statement.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to approve that.
A little more on there than I like to see. But some of those were just us not being aware of the invoices coming in on time, so I'm sure. One of those was I was fighting the, an invoice, so, but everything worked out in the end.
So were the Miami County ESC bills, were those for two different quarters or the same quarter?
Those are two different employees, I believe those are the school psychologist invoices. I could be incorrect. Are those tuition invoices? I'd have to look at that, Sam. They're both on the same PO, so it's for the same type of service. I believe it's just for two different, it might be tuition for students. I don't think it's for the, I don't think it's for the psychologists. I think it's probably for salaries, I did. I don't remember. I can look that up in a few minutes, but, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, now we're ready for a vote, then.
Okay, Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
And Mr. Venters.
Yes.
And that motion is approved.
I actually have that right now.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and?
Special ed services.
Okay.
They work for some educational tuition invoices.
Very good, we'll move on then to, well, first, there's no old business that I have on the agenda. Does anyone have any old business to raise? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on with new business, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Kumpf.
All right, item A, recommend approval to accept the following retirements. That's Judy Duncan at Broadway Elementary as a kitchen manager, as well as Charlotte Styles as LT ball teacher's aide.
I'll second, thanking them for their service.
Moved and seconded, Corinne and Sam. Any other discussion?
I just want to mention that Judy has been with us for pretty three years. Very dedicated and loves the kitchen and loves what she's been doing. And Mrs. Styles has been there for thirty years, working with children, so.
She's off their butt.
Yeah, they're both are wonderful people and exemplary TIP employees, so.
Please be silent.
Yeah.
Don't let them go, come on. I didn't lose weight when I moved over here, though.
She can cook, yes, she can. She's the best bake beans.
With the whole discipline.
I probably, I'm going to say this, because every kid walked through that line.
She's amazing.
And from day about three, and you know my passion for this, she knew every kid when they walked through there and knew my name and could put their number in fast for the bake.
Yeah, she knows their account number, too, that amazes me.
And I just think that is something that she connected with kids when they walked through that line. And appreciate her love. What's that?
Does she know who likes the baked beans?
Well, she knows.
Yes, she does, not very many.
She would, you know, when my kids would go through there with too many snack items, she would say, no, you have to put one of those back. She was like a mom at the end of that line.
Definitely.
Amazing.
One thing, we lose money in the cafeteria.
She knows which kids get the double baked beans, which kids, I mean, she knows those kids, it's wonderful.
And I have to say, Mrs. Styles, she greets the all students out there every morning.
She is the best.
Great smile.
Always has a smile on her face, always in a great mood.
Keeps the line moving.
Cheerful, that's what I like about her. She keeps it moving, and I agree, she's a mover.
We will miss them both. Okay, I think we're ready for our vote.
Okay, Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Okay, let's see, we've got another arrival. Are we ready then for, move back to?
Okay, well, we want to move back to G, and I want to step over this way. We're very excited this evening to be highlighting and actually doing a signing for a very special program that we're bringing on board here with the partnership, both with UC as well as Sinclair University. And I want to just kind of introduce our individuals that are here this evening. We have Islam Said as well, he is from University of Cincinnati, as well as Kelly Rochaie, is that right? Okay, very good. We have Kelly Jones from Sinclair as well, Kyle Jones, as well as Melissa Toll and Todd Schilling. So we're very happy to have you. And Mr. Beerhoff, I'd like for you to just take a moment and tell us a little bit about the program.
So in keeping with the celebratory nature of the meeting tonight, we do have a great opportunity that we've been working on since the fall, working with the administration at the high school, the counselors, Sinclair, and representatives from the University of Cincinnati in developing a pathway for students at Tip Canoe High School to participate in the University of Cincinnati IT or informational technology early college program. So through a combination of advanced placement classes and college credit plus classes, students at THS will be able to take Sinclair classes on our campus, earn credit that will be transferable to the University of Cincinnati, that they could then enter the University of Cincinnati as sophomores, not as freshmen. And they would have earned their freshman year credits in that degree towards IT. So it's a wonderful opportunity, it's a unique opportunity, as we are one of a few schools here in the state of Ohio that have been able to develop this type of pathway for our students. So I would like to invite the representatives from Sinclair and UC to come on up here and share a few thoughts from their side of things.
Well, I can go first, hasn't it? So I'm Melissa Toll, and I'm wearing two hats tonight. I'm actually a mom of kids in the TIP City School District. We've lived here for a few years, and it's all really because Mr. G did a tour of the facilities and sold us that this was the district that we wanted to call home.
Remember, I sold Broadway.
You did, you did. But we've lived here now, and our oldest is actually getting ready to enter into high school into this next academic year. So I'm wearing that hat from a personal side that, you know, I'm really thankful that TIP City is looking at ways to bring different opportunities to students. And then professionally, I work within College Credit Plus and Tech Prep at Sinclair. And really, if you know much about College Credit Plus, the whole purpose of it is to get students early exposure to college credit and put them on a career pathway. And it's really a great benefit to students, their families, and our community. The state of Ohio is trying to get a sixty-five percent college attainment rate. And the IT pathway and CIS is really a strong pathway for students to have. Kyle Jones, who is our director, or chair of our CIS department, is a stellar individual who leads a lot of that in our profession at Sinclair. But there's a twenty percent job expected increase in the next five to ten years for students that have a technical degree in IT. So giving these students this opportunity to do this early helps them to move faster in earning that credential, saves their families time and money, and really just make sure that they get connected to that career pathway. So from the Sinclair folks, we want to say thank you to the TIP City administrators. You've done a lot of work in making CCP happen. This year alone, you have sixty students who are working in College Credit Plus at Sinclair and will earn up to six hundred college credit hours. That's outside of the IT pathway. You've had two students graduate with associate's degrees prior to high school graduation. So this is just one more way that as a district, you're making those opportunities available to students. So we thank you as administrators, we thank the board for your support on that. College Credit Plus has come with a lot of different challenges that our districts have had to try to work out. So we appreciate your support in that. And we thank our University of Cincinnati partnership. Sinclair, the students who start in College Credit Plus at Sinclair, twenty-five percent of your students have matriculated right to Sinclair post-high school. But UC is one of our top five transfer institutions that students go to. So providing an opportunity while they're here, but also giving them that opportunity post-high school is really critical. So we're excited to be in partnership with TIP City High School and with University of Cincinnati, and look forward to what the future has to hold. So I know you probably had some remarks that you'd like to share.
I can always talk. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. And I'm very happy to be here with you to make history. And I'm not exaggerating, but not often three institutions of higher education come together to address college access and college affordability. This program we're putting together here reduces college cost by at least twenty percent and gives the students a path to earning money through co-op to pay for the cost of their college. In some cases, if the student takes the money and save it, not waste it, they may not even need a loan or need a saving to pay for their college. At the same time, this program resolves the issue of college access. No longer a student will be talented, skilled, but because they can't pass a test on a Saturday morning at eight o'clock, they have no chance of getting into college. With this program, the student have an opportunity to prove themselves in the high school through the partnership with Sinclair. And if they prove themselves, the door to college, we call it automatic admission. We're the only research one university in the country that has something called automatic admission, which means if a student in the IT program in TIP City Schools meet and finish this program, they are guaranteed acceptance and enrollment into the baccalaureate program at UC. They can do it close to home on the campus of Sinclair in our unique partnership that we have with Sinclair. Or if they want to travel away from home for the new year, they can come to Cincinnati and do it from the Cincinnati campus. So because of that, I think this is history. And I'm very excited to be here, making history. Thank you for following up. And for the Board of Education and the public, it takes leadership to make something like that happen. So I don't want to belittle the effort that the principal and the superintendent have done. I've worked with many school districts. It is leadership that brings us through the finish line. So I'm excited to be working with you. This is just the beginning, ensuring that the students succeed, that the teachers succeed, that we have a thriving economy in this digital age, that's the road ahead. And, but we came together to make it happen so far, and I'm sure we'll continue to make it happen in the future. Thank you for having us here, I'm excited.
We are too. Nice having you too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to invite all of you up, we'll take a photo, and Mr. Stevens.
Not like the mother. She's down the car.
Are we back, we're back to item B?
That's the rest I need.
Over, we're up for the resignations. Item B resignations, recommend approval to accept the following resignations. We have certified Jody Share as a special education, high school middle school proud, as an international specialist. In supplementals, we have Michael Derry as a middle school assistant track coach, and Bridgette Hughes as a middle school English department head, and Brad Klepass as a high school assistant football coach, as well as Amy Suter as our varsity cheer coach for fall and winter.
Okay. Just need a motion?
I'll move, I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Corinne and Joellen. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is approved.
Item C, recommend approval to hire long-term substitute teacher Luca Circle as he has now reached his sixtieth day teaching in the same position effective February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Sam and Teresa, any discussion?
This is a social studies position at the high school.
No further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item D, recommend approval to hire the following supplemental position for the two thousand nineteen, twenty, two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, pending proper certification and paperwork. And that's Matthew Burbacher as head high school football coach.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Sam and Corinne, any discussion?
Again, just great, I mean, it's really great to have him back. Thank you guys, all the, all their hard work.
All right. Very good, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mr. Spano.
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Yes.
Mr. Venters.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item E, recommend approval to hire the following supplemental positions for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, pending proper certification and paperwork.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
And I should ask for the agenda.
All right, moved and seconded, Joellen and some combination of Teresa.
Sam.
I was confused, too.
Call it Sam.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Does that complete all of our spring contracts for athletics?
I believe it does. Actually, we had a late baseball situation come in, sold this and was a bit of an addition. But yes, we should be queued up and ready to go.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for a vote?
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item F, recommend to approve the change of the following contracts due to clerical error, originally approved on January 28, 2019. And that's as per the agenda.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Teresa and Corinne. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item G, recommend approval of the following substitute position for the 2018-19 school year, pending proper certification and paperwork, as per the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I'm going to give this one to Joellen.
She was louder.
She was a little louder. Moved and seconded, Corinne and Joellen. Any discussion?
So, what is this person currently doing? They're currently employed, yes?
This is an individual that I know that.
Just was a substitute teacher, but was also willing to work in the office.
Aid position.
Right, so they're already employed.
Yes.
Definitely, just to make sure. Okay, thank you.
But just was willing to do more than what was there.
That's fine, I'm good.
Once in a while, we do have individuals that they just enjoy being in the schools.
Yeah, sure, that's a good thing. We want people to enjoy being in the schools.
Yeah, we do, we do. And when we have any sort of souffleuses or anything going on, it's wonderful to have people that have the flexibility or the interest in that.
Right, great, that's all I need to thank you.
Okay, ready for a vote?
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item A, recommend approval to employ the following for athletic services in the 2018-19 school year. And that's Mr. Greg Suthers.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Teresa and Corinne. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item I, recommend approval to accept a $4,000 donation from the Dunaway Family Foundation to support TIP Canoe High School.
400.
I'm sorry.
No, because my checkbook only gave 400.
No, it's not 4,000.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But hey, nice try.
We should have liked the effort. I'm going to do 4,000 next year.
I apologize. We are happy about all of it, all of it.
Dave, did you get that in there?
Right, right.
Recommend approval to accept a $400 donation from the Dunaway Family Foundation to support TIP Canoe High School students' kindness week. And that's probably what they needed for kindness week.
There you go.
It would've been an over budget.
There you go.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Corinne and Sam. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Teresa.
Yeah, they each got a $100 Amazon gift card. And they got elected by their peers, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, that is very cool.
And ended up being four females, just by happenstance, yeah.
Thank you for that, and I apologize for the air.
No, you're fine.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Alright. Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved. Thank you to the Dunaway Foundation.
Item J, winner for, oops, up here. Recommend approval of the following overnight trip, winner percussion competing at Firestone High School. That would be March 16 through March 17, 2019.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, Joellen and Teresa. Any discussion?
Is this the drum line?
This is.
They are amazing.
I was going to say the same thing. They are beyond amazing.
They are so, I mean.
So amazing.
It seems like that has really grown so quickly.
They're so good.
Yeah, it's really great.
Oh, they're so good.
Mr. McNathet also serves us there at Nevan Coffee. He's just a wonderful addition, and students, whether they're K1 or whether they're at our high school through the percussion and drum line, he does a fantastic job. Yes.
He is phenomenal.
They actually competed at Butler yesterday.
Yeah, they did, it was on, mhm. They sure do. They're so good.
Okay, ready for the vote, Dave?
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.